It's 5:30. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I call my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Welcome, everyone who's watching from home. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Present.
Trustee Gett.
Present.
Trustee Kazam.
Present.
Trustee Reichert.
Present.
Trustee Wigginton.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Everyone is present in one way or another. I did announce at the last meeting that Mr. Aldrich and I will be leaving the meeting early tonight. We've been asked to speak to a group of local contractors and suppliers. That's been on the calendar for a couple of months now, so we apologize for leaving early, but you'll all be able to carry on without us.
Mayor, before we start, we need a motion to allow remote attendance. I believe Trustee DeVore is absent due to work, so she qualifies for remote attendance, but we do need a motion.
Thanks, Council. I would ask for a motion to allow Trustee DeVore to participate remotely.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Upstate.
Trustee Gett.
Present.
Aye or nay?
Oh, aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, you do have some correspondence, I believe.
I do. This letter reads as follows. To Mayor Phelan and the Peoria Heights trustees regarding budget shortfall. It was without surprise to read the PJ Star article from March 11th, 2024, discussing the upcoming budget shortfall for Peoria Heights. It was so obvious that this was going to happen since there was never a rigorous financial analysis done on how to move forward with the fire department. I reviewed all trustee minutes and attached all I can find, which includes some financial analysis. See attached from July 18th agenda and pages from Peoria Fire Chief Presentation. This analysis seems woefully inadequate and unrealistic while not showing any projections into the future. Were there projections made on what this will cost going forward, as well as how the village will pay for the fire department and its impact on current and future village budgets? Keep in mind, this is just the beginning. A full-time professional fire department will collectively bargain and include healthcare and pensions. Those costs are permanent. Each year, the trustees will have to decide what more to cut and what taxes to increase and add. It is not too late to admit a mistake that was made because a motion drove the decision. Instead of rigorous financial analysis and the true costs were understood by the mayor and the trustees, stop going down this path and find one that does not incur permanent costs that we can't afford. J.T. Kellogg, 4925 North Grandview Drive, Peoria Heights, Illinois.
Is that the only one?
That is. If any of the trustees would like to see the attachments that Mr. Kellogg included, please see me after the meeting.
Thank you. So we would be at approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on February 15th, February 24th, and March 5th, 2024. I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this set of minutes. Any discussion on the motion or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we'd be comments from the audience on agenda items. If you're here tonight to address the board, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. And just also, if you would be conscious, to try and speak into the microphone so everyone at home can hear you. So public comments are open. Sean, welcome.
Hi, I'm Sean Edwards of Peoria Heights Library, but I'm representing the Peoria Heights Arts Collaborative tonight. And I believe you have in front of you a couple of copies of the latest poetry project books that the collaborative produced. There is a third edition that will be coming out on April 23rd. The debut is at 6:00 p.m. at the high school in the gymnasium, if you'd like to attend that. The project has been going on, like I said, this is our third year of the program, and it was a very big project of Mary Beth Nebel, who passed away last year. There's a nice dedication for her in the edition. Unfortunately, she's not around to appreciate the work that's gone into it, but... And the project is planned to continue beyond this year. All the work in it is produced by the students of the Peoria Heights High School. All the artwork is produced by them as well. And it's turned out really nicely. We've been really happy with it and be happy to see you show up at the debut. And if you need to, I mean, we've always got copies available for purchase from the Peoria Heights Arts Collaborative from the high school. But it's been a really nice project. Really happy to continue this. If you have any questions about it, you know, just see me, but that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean, and thanks for all you do for the library. It's a great asset in the community. Barb?
Hello, Barb Malascio. I am here on behalf of Exhibit A Gallery as a retail business at 4707 North Prospect Road in Peoria Heights. So I come to you today as a plea to the trustees to vote against the retail sales tax. Many reasons that I do have. I feel we are going to be put more pressure upon as businesses to tax our customers. Our customers are the ones that are coming to this area. They are spending their money. We're wanting them to come, give us their business in the Heights, whether it's for the retail businesses or the restaurants, and we're going to tax them. I feel like it's almost a punishment to come. We are the reason why Peoria Heights is a good part of the way that it is. They want to patronize our businesses. They want to eat at our restaurants. They want to come and play in our parks and in our events at Tower Park. If we are the reason as retail businesses and our taxes are bringing that money to the village, if we keep raising taxes, whether it be at the property tax or also at the retail end, we're going to have to leave. We are not going to be able to run our businesses if we keep getting taxed. If you are just a tenant, if those taxes are brought upon at the property end, they're going to raise our rents. It is so expensive. We are still, in so many ways, recuperating from COVID, and I think we will. And there's so many struggles that we have, so I think this proposed tax increase is just going to put a bigger burden on retail businesses. You know, and another thing that I wanted to stress, I mean, truly, truly, I feel that the events that we have, that they're promoted, whether it's through the Friday Night Heights, that it is through any chamber events that we have, whether it be the Kringle Market, any of the events that we have. We have walks that we have here. People aren't going to come if there aren't businesses to support that. So I truly, truly strongly recommend that you consider just voting against the tax increase, you know? And I know I'm not trying to say that we don't need the fire department or we don't need the police department. It all takes a community. But one of the big parts of this community, it's not only the retail streets that are right here, the three blocks, it's the other businesses that are a big contribution to the village. So again, I just wanted to state, and that was on behalf of Exhibit A Gallery. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill?
Hi, I'm Jill Wakefield, and I'm here representing the Peoria Heights Chamber of Commerce as the immediate past president. And we too at the chamber would like for you to consider voting no, but we also have a proposal that we would like to give you as well on a better way to bring in tax dollars. And that's to, instead of raising taxes, which our restaurants are already in the higher percentage of tax rate for our area, I think when we're in a position where we're in a village that literally, when you can step across the street and actually be in Peoria, when you can pay less in Peoria than you can in the Heights, I think that looks kind of bad, and it will pull business from the village. But if we were able to promote harder for the Heights, bring more business into the Heights through more marketing and advertising, we could actually look at it from a bulk perspective instead of raising prices to possibly take people out. Now, if we leave prices where they are for the taxes, now people will want to come, and then we can market the village harder, just like we would a business. We would market harder, we would market stronger, and then bring the business back into the village. So that's what the chamber recommends, is that we advertise harder, market harder, and bring more people through rather than having that possibility of people leaving their tax dollars somewhere else. It's already been brought to our attention that some of the businesses in the Heights that already have multiple locations, that their clients will not come into the Heights to spend money. If... A good example might be is if you are an Italian restaurant in the Heights, there is many Italian restaurants that are not in the Heights that will be less expensive in the long run. And some of our businesses, prior to even knowing about the tax increase, have been already questioned about, you know, hey, what are the taxes in the Heights? So people are already aware of it, and the one example that I do have, when that business was asked, the client told them they will not visit their business in the Heights because of the tax rate. So the chamber would love for you to keep our taxes where they are and promote us. And with the help of the chamber, we would love to take that marketing with you and bring more business into the Heights. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joseph Bergerhoff, and I have a property at 4319 Galena Road. And I'm hoping to save the property, keep the property. Right now, it's property number two for the IDOT to take. And I had a meeting with IDOT personnel yesterday afternoon. Their original thing, when we met with them last year, they were talking about taking 10-foot of the property right away, and that... Yesterday, when I met with them, they were talking about 25-foot. 25-foot, and also, they're going to be taking the property north of me, which was not slated to be taken at 4325 Galena Road. Excuse me. And driving up Galena Road, if you're looking 15 more feet from what they originally said they were taking, they're going to be taking a lot more properties. That's going to be taking properties off the tax roll. My property is a B&amp;B, and not only do I pay taxes, but I pay property taxes, but I pay taxes on the guest lodgings and that. So I'm working with... I'm trying to make it to where my driveway is not as steep. And I guess the key thing right now that they brought up yesterday is whether a fire truck would be able to get up the driveway. So I'm here this evening and asking for assistance, bringing this to your attention, that I've been reading about your shortfall because of the fire department. But if you take 50 propies off of Galena Road and take them off the property tax roll, I'm sure the state's not going to pay you anything for property tax. That's going to hurt maybe more than the fire department. Well, I don't know. I just thought there's a meeting tomorrow night at the grade school with IDOT to let everybody know, and a lot of people are not aware of, they are now taking 25-foot instead of 10. Now, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here. The administrator and I will discuss this further later this week. Wayne, are you able to shed any light on this?
I'm not. You know, every situation's going to be different from an engineering standpoint, so I'm reluctant to make any comment without, you know, digging into the actual facts.
We'll look into it. And then, Council, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a state road, it's their project, they are... There's not often a lot we can do. Is that correct? But we'll look into it, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Jeff, welcome.
I am Jeff Heebner, representing Treffsker's Bakery and the Trailside Events Center tonight. And I pretty much have to agree with what Jill and Barb has just said about raising the taxes. If I remember right, sitting in one of the meetings a few years ago, there was a budget shortfall. We wanted to raise the... The village wanted to raise the taxes by another, you know, 25% or not 25%, but 25% on the dollar, whatever. Anyway, the way it was looked at was, sure, who's going to miss 25 cents out of a $100 bill that you're going to be paying in a restaurant that you're going to be going to here? Nobody's going to miss that extra 25%. But what happened in that last meeting, it was pretty clear that what's going to happen in the future? We're going to raise it another, and then raise it another, and raise it another, and where does it stop? And that was the biggest thing that I took away from a few years ago, that, you know, yeah, we can raise the taxes to meet the, you know, the budget shortfall, but where's the other money going to come from? And how many more times do we have to say, hey, let's just, you know, let's just raise the resale tax in, you know, in the Heights in order to make that budget fall? And it's, you know, where's it going to end? So I feel like we should say no on that and find a different alternative. That's about all I got.
Thank you. Public comments still open. Anyone else? All right. Public comment going once? Oh, Hugh? Sorry, didn't see back there.
I saw these bodies here, it's because more people pop up and speak their minds.
Hi, Hugh Higgins, representing Hearth Restaurant, 4604 Prospect. So, yeah, you are in an enviable position. It's tough. How do you close these gaps? It's tough. Very happy to see the BECS project. I see, you know, wonderful potential revenues from there. I know that's going to, you know, be a wonderful boon to the village. Very happy for that. Not a big fan of dispensaries, but I'm sure that's going to, you know, bring a nice addition too, and you got to get it where it can. If people want to come, bring their business to the Heights, got to be welcome, got to bring them, so I welcome them all. But I am representing, I guess, a mouthpiece. Nobody asked me to, but I'm going to speak what I believe is a collective thought from the restaurateurs. And we consider ourselves, along with our wonderful retail shops as well, we are the hand that feeds you in a very large way. Peoria Heights has become a destination for dining. We get customers from Bloomington, from Galesburg, from Princeton, a lot of Morton, Dunlap. We have created a great thing here, and I don't want to see that turn the other direction, and I'm sure none of you want to either. I know I get the stink eye sometimes when I have to fill out third-party contracts, and I'm dealing with pharmaceutical companies or corporations that are coming in, want to entertain people, and I have third-party contracts, and I got to fill out the forms, and they go, do you have parking? No, it's all street parking. Okay, that's a... And what is your tax? And it's 11.75%. And they go, whoa, you what? Yep, I'm 11.75. That's the way it is. And like, wow, you're almost Chicago prices. Yeah, 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 that's the way it is. But come, we'll have a good time, I'm sure we'll treat you right. So it's been a challenge all along, and it'll continue to be a challenge. One of the things I want to maybe help you make aware of is restaurants are looked at as a luxury, and we don't want it to be just for the luxurious. We have recently incurred a fee from the State of Illinois Paid Time Off Leave Act. So now, all of my employees, from dishwashers up, doesn't matter, everybody can accrue one hour of paid time off for every 40 hours that they work. That can accrue that on an annual basis. For me, you know, my numbers, if everybody gets the same hours that they did last year, you know, that's going to be potentially $5,000 or $6,000 that I'm going to have to shell out. And they don't even have to give me a reason why they're not going to be there that day. All they have to do is notify me in a timely process, and that's going to happen. So that money's going to trickle away. How do I recover that? Do I raise prices on that? Do I incur service charges and fees? I don't know. Haven't done any of those things yet, but I'm going to have to do something. And now, even more dreadful is the potential of the abolishment of the employee tip credit. Unemployment... Excuse me. Minimum wage in Illinois right now is $14. In January, it'll be $15. Employees who receive tips need to report tips to bring them up to that wage. I am allowed to only pay them 60% of that $14 an hour right now, which means they're $8.40 an hour. But if this act passes and goes into effect January of next year, minimum wage is now 15, and that $8.40 now goes to $15 an hour. So I will, in every restaurant in Illinois, will be incurring a 40% labor increase, which will be devastating to many. It will drive a lot of places out of business. There's... It's just frightening. So we had meetings today, we're meeting with the state, we're trying to make them realize that these people are not receiving slave wages, you know? $8.40, you can't make a little more than $8.40 an hour. But there's a generous audience out there that has helped us through COVID and has helped us survive. I'm sure you saw some of the wonderful newsprint recently. Schooners, an anonymous, well, not anonymous person, a person gave 30 employees $1,000 each. I was blessed to have a customer that saw that act, that someone else did, and did the same for all of my employees. The generosity's out there, and it's wonderful, but it can't maintain. It's going to be a point where the only... The luxury people will be able to enjoy us, and not just Hearth Restaurant. It's going to take everything up, everywhere you go, from an Oliver's to a Branzo's to, you know, Sullivan's, Cayenne, it doesn't matter. So it's... We're just the fatted calf that gets sent to the slaughter, so please help us from going to the slaughter.
Thank you. Public comments still open? Going once? Twice? Public comments closed? Is there any old business coming for the board? All right. Next is new business. We have Resolution 2024-01, a resolution in support of and authorizing application by the Village of Peoria Heights for community project funding and congressionally-directed spending for the design and construction of decorative roadway and pedestrian lighting for IDOT Route 29 project. Trustee Kazam had asked for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is. Go ahead, Trustee Kazam.
So just as this says, what we are voting on tonight is authorizing Director Aldrich to apply for this grant, which would be very beneficial to the Route 29 project in that it would provide decorative lighting for the multi-use trail down there. It's a 2.2... Pardon me. $2.5 million grant. It has a $500,000 match, and I think that it's really necessary to consider something like this because this entire project is going to benefit Route 29 and all of the neighborhoods in that area. There's a multi-use trail going in there, and I think that this is adding to safety and, you know, predominantly, safety in that area and on that trail, which is something I know we're all for. But I would turn it over to Director Aldrich to add anything more that he wants to add to that.
Yes, I think, yes. Safety is the primary reason, you know, providing lighting not just for the road, but also for the shared use trail. And the... But the other is aesthetics, placemaking, things like that. I mean, if you put up nice light poles, we can put banners on them and really announce that you're in Peoria Heights from Route 29. So I think that's very important, and again, spurs economic development both, you know, above the bluffs and below the bluffs. So I think that's a very important part of that. It really is the type of thing that will, I think, make the project much better and certainly enhance the project. This is the type of thing, if you're putting in lighting, you can also put in communication lines very easily, provide surveillance cameras, provide call stations, and other types of enhancements for security as well. So... And I think security is a big part of this as well. So those are some of the reasons. Again, this is congressional funding. We used to call them earmarks through both Senators Durbin and Duckworth, as well as Congressman Sorenson. We were fortunate through Congressman Sorenson last year to get money for a water main replacement, about $960,000 for the same project. So it's just things that IDOT doesn't typically pay for that we can contribute to and make the project much better.
Thank you, Wayne. Anyone else? Trustee Weisenberg?
Yeah, I got a question for Trustee Kazam. If we were to approve this tonight, does that mandate that we provide the $500,000 if the grant's approved, or will there be a second vote to actually authorize?
I don't think we would want to go down the road of applying for a grant and utilizing the resources and paying Director Aldrich to apply for it, and then, you know, it's really not a good look when these public officials fight for us in Washington, and then we don't come up with the cash. I mean, I don't... I think that would be a very bad situation to put our community in.
I think they'll ask for an agreement. Once we approve it, they'll want a signed agreement.
Okay. Where would the $500,000 come from? Because we're... We just heard from our business leaders that we face a significant deficit this year. So if we're going to agree to $500,000, is that something we're budgeting for next year? And how does that make our budget look? Because we are already significantly in the red to begin with.
I think we can pull from our capital improvement fund.
But that would be a budgeted expense. Where is that in the budget?
That's why it's on the agenda tonight, so we have to decide if we don't want to waste any more time or Director Aldrich's efforts if we're not interested in the match. So that's why we wanted to have the discussion tonight. As far as where it's coming from, that's a discussion we need to have now because we're getting close to passing the budget.
Right. And my concern is, is we've had quite a bit of conversations regarding how we meet essential functions of this government, which is public safety. And now, before those conversations are even done with, and before we even know how we're going to fund the fire department long-term, we're talking about $500,000 for decorative lighting on Route 29.
I don't think you should just look at it, I mean, you can look at it any way you want, but as decorative lighting. I think this really actually improves the safety of that area and also does something that we've been trying to do as a board collectively for a long time, which puts that area of our community on the map to increase sales and, you know, encourage business and all that type of thing in that area, which would then bring money back into our community to pay for other things.
I don't necessarily disagree regarding the safety. As a child who grew up on Long Shore subdivision, I know quite well the safety issues with Route 29. But the fire department and the police department are also public safety issues, and we still don't know how we're going to fund it long-term. So I'd be really hesitant to commit $500,000. That could pay a lot of fire pensions for quite a bit of years.
Well, I mean, for all the... I mean, this is a very good question that you bring up, Trustee Weisenberg, because I think what you're saying is that, are we going to be able to fund any of these projects? And at some point, we're going to have to really think about that long and hard, and we're also... I mean, another option would be ultimately bonding. We're going to have to decide when we're going to bond for these.
Well, and I would ask you... You bring up some good points, Trustee Weisenberg. I don't disagree, but I would ask you to look at the big picture in the long term. We had a public comment earlier about sales tax, and that is really how we pay most of our bills here, and that is how we're going to fund police and fire moving forward. Now, I think this board took a big step when it engaged the community and adopted a comprehensive plan for the community. What came out of that was identifying Route 150, War Memorial Drive, as potential for development and additional revenues. You took that step. We spent a lot of money in extending the TIF District and Business Development District over to War Memorial Drive, which I think already you're seeing significant returns on that investment, both by BECS and the dispensary. And, you know, we continually hear in this office from developers who have an interest in other developments along War Memorial Drive. So my point is, is that if we were concerned about money back then, and we would have never spent the money to extend that TIF and Business Development District money, we wouldn't have BECS, we wouldn't have the dispensary. we wouldn't have Bex, we wouldn't have the dispensary. And I'd like you to think again, what could, you know, we, we have a vision for Route Twenty-Nine. And of course, the main goal on Route Twenty-Nine has been public safety. It's a very unsafe road. So making it much more safe, making it better for the quality of life. But also, we feel very strongly that Route Twenty-Nine is ripe for both residential and commercial development. And you and I have talked at length about residential development. Not only do we need sales tax dollars, we need people to move back to the village because people bring a lot of value to a community in so many ways, and not just through money. So I would ask you to look at it, at it that way. This is a long-term investment in, in the village. And making that road safe and helpful to economic development is going to be important. So I, I think we just, we need to find the money to continue to, to make this road another avenue for progress in the village.
And I don't mean to downplay the significance of safety enhancements around Twenty-Nine or economic development. But I would just like to remind the board that it looks like we're poised to increase the costs the residents have for their garbage to be able to afford our budget. We've discussed sales tax increases. And then before those conversations are even done or fully implemented, we're talking about five hundred thousand dollars for lighting, decorative lighting. So I'm sure we could, we could increase lighting along Route Twenty-Nine significantly cheaper than decorative lighting. Not that those things aren't important. It's just, you know, when the citizens look to us, they want us to set our priorities. And funding public safety.
I just want to respond to that one thing because I actually intended to say this when I was explaining this. It is, would all the responsibility to put in any kind of lighting would fall on the Village of Peoria Heights, which would be a lot more expensive than a half a million dollars. By applying for this grant and paying our share of it, it's really a reduced cost to the village.
I understand that. I just wish we had budget discussions. This would have been included. Because right now, several comments were made that we are in a budget situation because of the fire department. Well, if this was included in the budget, we'd be in a budget situation because of decorative lighting and not the fire department. So I just want to make sure that we have our priorities straight and that we're doing what the people expect us to do, and that is provide those core services, which is public works, public safety. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
I do.
Go ahead, Trustee DeWor.
Okay, so am I wrong in understanding that we were kind of already working with client and associates about creating a TIF district on Route Twenty-Nine?
That's correct.
You're right.
Okay, so if the TIF district was created, could we then use TIF funds for our portion of the match? Or also could we use any of the reserves that we have put on hand for the surpluses we've had the last several years to pay for this portion of the grant if we were awarded it?
I'll let Director Aldrich answer that because I know some grants allow that and some do not.
Yeah, I think typically, TIF is eligible for these types of public improvement.
BDD certainly would be.
And BDD as well, because that's entirely up to the board. But, you know, I think, you know, we talked about bonding or financing. I think TIF can be used to help with that, too.
Anything else, Trustee DeWor?
No, that's all on this topic, Mayor. Thank you.
Trustee Wigginton, I think you were next.
Thank you, Mayor. So just, I hate to bounce ahead a little bit on the agenda, but one of the things that we see here on the agenda was the Tri-County River Bonding Program for development along, along the river. And that's for various communities, I think, that fall upon this. And seeing that we're ceding, for strategic reasons, that we are ceding this money to this bonding authority, this Tri-County Bonding Authority, I was wondering, where does the line stop as far as what is available from that, that bonding authority? Could this fall into, to that so we could pay for it out of some of these available funds as well?
I, I think it could, but they typically like big projects, big projects that are going to create jobs. Wayne, you may know.
I think that's true. They, you know, they support basically public projects and try to, you know, make them tax exempt, those types of things. So it's a better way to finance certain projects. I'm not, I'm not that familiar that I can tell you that's a, it's a viable source for this, but, but it's certainly something we check into.
We, we can find that out.
And I, I saw the, the letter from the director. I did, just FYI, did call. It's the number provided, but I did not get a response.
And that's typically done every year from all the, I mean, they'll, they'll ask the other partners in the area to, to do the same. So we've, we've done this annually. But your point that someday we might have a project where, where we should approach them. Anyone else on this?
If we put a TIF district down there, is it going to take a while for the TIF to acquire money for us to use? Or will we be able to cap into the ones that we already got?
That's a good point. And you have to have sales tax generating businesses and businesses that add to the increment and add to the BDD. So it could take some time. But War Memorial, with thirty thousand car count a day, that was just in a, in a sweet spot to collect more revenue sooner than later from that. But I think, I think the development of Route Twenty-Nine may, may take longer, but you never know. I mean, if there is an anchor down there, a Bex, a hotel, something like that, that would really speed things up, it, Trustee, I think it's, it's very possible.
And this will promote that. I mean, this action would promote that, but we can also transfer monies within the different TIFs. So if that were a TIF district, we could use money from other TIFs to.
They could support each other.
And I, I would just add, you know, this is a, you know, that's on the Illinois River Road scenic highway. So it's, you know, we talked about marketing. That's certainly a place we could apply some marketing to, 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 to bring people to that area.
This is truly one of the major gateways into our community. I mean, people that are traveling that area will whip these banners and lighting, and we call it decorative, but it's a, as you say, a form of marketing to bring people into our community and shopping.
I agree. We've talked about that in, in the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan at length. Anyone else?
Trustee Kazam, do you know, or Director Aldrich, do you know what our timeline is? Is this, is this something that, I mean, and I know you're working with our legislative liaisons as well, so.
I mean, fingers crossed, it takes about a year because that's what it took for the, the last earmark that we got to here. It's a good time for IDOT. See, IDOT can actually help design this and incorporate it in their contracts. So it's a good time for them because they're just sort of ending their planning phases now. Then it'll be a couple of years for them to get plans put together and then, you know, construction. So I think it's a good time as far as the project, as far as timing. I would, yeah, I wish the money was here tomorrow, but it's not.
So if we, just trying to think of what Trustee Weisenberg is extremely valid concerns. If we put aside five hundred thousand dollars for this, we may not, it, it'll take a literal act of Congress for us to get that funding and then owe five hundred thousand dollars, correct?
It's correct.
Okay. In an election year.
Well, didn't I, dot, in our meeting, Director Aldrich, their timeline was construction was two thousand twenty-seven. I think that's what they gave us.
And I would say that's the earliest.
Right.
So one follow-up question. So if we were to approve this tonight, is the five hundred thousand dollars going to be budgeted for next fiscal year? And then are we going to balance our budget by taking that money out of surplus? Because I was told we don't like to do that. So do we like to do it or don't we like to do it? Or do we only like to do it for certain things?
Well, historically, we haven't had to. The last six years, we've had.
Surpluses.
Very large surpluses, so we haven't been in this situation. So as long as I've been in this position, we haven't been faced with that now. That isn't the way I balance the budget, obviously. And I think we had some brief discussions about that. Trustee Weisenberg, you know, it increases our cash on hand in case we do run into things like this. So we, we have some options rather than bonding. So I think moving forward, getting close to passing this budget, let me look at some different options and see what we can come up with. But my point to Director Aldrich was, this is not something we're going to be faced with anytime soon, but I do like to prepare for it. And I know how much is in our capital improvement plan. I know we have some other things we want to take out of that or pay for through that. And this is a very large item, so I think we could, we could get there. It doesn't have to be today, but we have to start thinking about it.
And I agree. Much to your credit, Chief, we've done, we've done quite well the last couple of years. But I think before we vote on this, we need to know what budget year it's going to come out of. Otherwise, we're just approving money blindly.
Well, we can propose something from administration, but in the end, the, the board votes on the budget. So it could be, you could decide to put it in this year, next, make budget amendments. We still have time on that. Anyone else?
Oh, go ahead. I'd like to move forward with the vote.
So, so could I get, just the motion on the floor is that we are adopting this in this current budget, correct? That would be the motion on the floor. And from what I understand out of Trustee Weisenberg's statements is if we do go for it, maybe it'd be wise to push it off a year into another.
You can amend this. I'm open for amendment.
I'm going to say, if we, if we put the five hundred thousand dollars in this budget year, then we're going to end the year with a three hundred thousand dollar deficit because we were running a two hundred and twelve thousand dollar surplus. If we put it next year's budget.
So Director Aldrich is saying it wouldn't be due until about, no, you're not saying twenty twenty-seven?
At least not until next year.
Twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, and that would take some time to spend it down, yeah.
Yeah. So we could take it incrementally out of budgets going forward.
But none of that's in our budgets.
It is not.
So are we going to get a revised draft budget to incorporate this spending, or?
Yeah, I think we have a few things to discuss that could.
Why not with a budget? I know it is.
But that would, that would be one of them, yes. So I, well, I will start working on options for that and what that looks like for the next meeting.
Yeah, it's a difficult budget year. That's why I brought this up. So, I mean, the people at home are watching, our businesses are watching. You know, there was several news articles about our seven hundred thousand dollar deficit. And before we've even got that resolved completely, now we're adding another five hundred thousand dollars onto it. And I don't mind, you know, if our policy is that we use our surpluses to offset spending, that's fine. But so far in our budget discussions, I've been told that's what we don't do. And now it sounds like we do do it. So just some clarity and having an updated budget that shows the spending would be helpful.
So this resolution is in support of authorizing the application. It doesn't actually say that it's coming out of this budget year.
It's just giving him authorization to move forward.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, my follow-up question was, where is this money coming from? When are we spending it?
We can vote on this this evening and then go back to the drawing board and figure out where.
That was my original question. When I asked, if we vote on this, does it force our hands to pay the five hundred thousand dollars? Because if I don't know where I'm getting that from, I don't want to be forced to spend it.
You will have another vote.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeWor?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Recker?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
No.
All right, that passes. As I stated earlier, Mr. Aldrich and I are scheduled to speak to a group of contractors and suppliers who are meeting in Peoria Heights tonight that's been on the calendar a couple of months. I apologize, we have to leave. So the mayor pro tem is remote and unable to run the meeting. So Trustee Gett, I guess I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, we have, next item on the agenda is ordinance two zero two four one seven two six, ordinance amending Title Three, Chapter Three of the Village Code for the quarter percent sales tax.
No.
No, wait a minute.
No, there's no percentage on it. The home, the home rule in this.
Home rule, okay. Andy, I'm looking for a motion. Trustee DeWor?
I make a motion to deny Order Twenty Twenty-four dash seventeen twenty-six.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Um, I do have some comments on this. I would like to say I need to deny the sales tax increase for several reasons tonight. The first being that I believe that at some point we will have to raise sales taxes in the future, but I'd rather do it when absolutely necessary. I do not want to see us nickel and dime the residents and the people who patron our businesses. When we have to raise sales taxes, I would like it to be at a point where we can see a, a reflection of a larger impact than what we have set here today on today's agenda. I know I was originally in favor of this decision, but upon further consideration and diving into the proposed budget, I feel that the direction we are going is not setting us up for success. This board has a lot of factors to consider with proposing this budget. And as my fellow trustees have stated in prior meetings, we are going to have to consider more funding options and alternatives than a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of tax free forgiveness. As everyone here knows, I'm a very strong supporter of our fire department. I, as well as some of my other trustees, want to see this depart, this department succeed as well as grow. This department has been in service as a volunteer department for a hundred and seven, a hundred and seven years. I know that in today's society, we are faced with volunteer challenges as well as several other factors. I am in favor of approving changes that will allow us to be competitive and move with the times. That being said, when the majority of this board voted in favor of keeping our fire department in-house, it was with the idea that we would add to the budget they currently had and gradually grow this department. In twenty twenty-three, the fire budget was four hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And on December nineteenth of twenty twenty-three, I moved to add four hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars annually to this department's budget, giving the fire department a new budget of eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars. The proposed fire budget, as it sits today, is budgeted over by three hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-six cents. It is imperative, in my opinion, that we have a balanced budget moving into this new fiscal year. I personally would like to see Trustee Wigginton, the trustee over the fire department, Chief Decker, Administrator Sutton, and myself, as the trustee over administration, get this budget into what we have previously agreed upon as a board. Public safety and our employee safety is the number one priority for me. I want everyone to be safe, but after the progress by Chief Decker, this fire department, and Administrator Sutton, I feel confident that we have great relationships with all the departments we work with that provide mutual aid to us, including the city of Peoria. I would like to see us hold tight to our original plan of gradually improving this department year by year. The current path we are on, we simply cannot afford. I fear we will, we will regret this decision if we do not start smaller and work our way up. I also do not want to see us set Chief Decker and this department up for failure by providing them with a budget that is not sustainable. I am in no way saying that I wouldn't approve more money next year, but we have a lot of things in the work that we need to consider. We have a dire water issue that is very costly we need to pay for. The school board has recently raised property taxes six percent, which will put a hardship on the residents and the businesses. We have a lot of grant opportunities that would better this community, as you heard previously in this meeting, that come with matching fund requirements. We are faced with a choice on if we want to walk away from those opportunities altogether or give ourselves a fighting chance to have both. Next year, we will have a better idea of sales taxes with these new developments, with what these new developments are providing, as well as the success of all the new programs and opportunities Chief Decker has already put into place in his short time with us. In my opinion, reducing the fire department's proposed budget by the three hundred and ninety thousand dollars will allow us to keep moving in the direction we have planned for. I request my fellow trustees vote to deny the sales tax increase and ask the above-mentioned personnel to work towards a more fiscally viable option.
Okay, any other?
Yeah, Trustee Gett, I got a few, a few, first, a few comments just for those listening at home. Peoria Heights certainly isn't the most expensive when it comes to property taxes. And not, not property tax, that too, but sales taxes. Peoria is one point seven five percent. East Peoria is one point seven five percent. Pekin's one point seven five percent. Peoria Heights is one point five percent. So we're already significantly cheaper than our surrounding towns. And when it comes to property taxes, we're significantly cheaper than Peoria. But I too oppose the sales cap, tax increase for several reasons. While I'm a firm supporter of our fire department and all our public services, overshooting the budget doesn't support the department fiscally or in the long term. I believe in raising sales taxes only when absolutely necessary to avoid burdening. I believe in raising sales taxes only when absolutely necessary to avoid burdening our residences and our businesses. Additionally, the proposed Fire Department budget overshoots by over $391,000, surpassing our previously agreed upon budget increase, as Trustee DeBoer alluded to, of $454,000. We must maintain a balanced budget while gradually growing the department. Therefore, I also urge my fellow trustees to reject the tax increase and collaborate with Trustee Wigginton and the Fire Department on a more sustainable solution with the relevant personnel. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm on the same page as Trustee DeBoer and Trustee Weisenberg. I have met with Chief Decker one-on-one and discussed some additional cuts that he can do, and I, my impression was he was pretty on board with some of them. I, I feel like we're in a hard spot right now, trying to figure out a way to kind of give everybody what they want, and I just want to reassure everybody that we are discussing it, and it's not, nothing's being ignored, and there is a lot of communication happening between all of us trying to figure out what is best for everyone, so.
Anyone else? So what's the motion that's on the floor?
The motion on the floor is to deny Ordinance 2024-1726, an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter III of the Village Code for the Village of Peoria Heights to increase the home rule municipal retailers' occupation tax and home rule municipal service occupation tax by one quarter percent. Again, that was a motion to deny Ordinance 2024.
So if you vote, if you vote yea, you're denying the tax?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure it's clear for everybody.
You don't vote, remember, because you're the leader.
Okay, takes it off my shoulders. Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Okay, it passes.
Which means it didn't pass.
It was denied at a vote.
Well, that passed.
Thank you.
It passed the way I explained it, so.
Exactly.
Okay, next up is Ordinance 2024-1725, special ordinance authorizing the ceding of private activity bonding authority. Trustee DeBoer?
I make a motion to pass Ordinance 2024-1725.
Second.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We touched on this briefly, since Wayne is gone, I'm sitting in a seat, I'll try to explain it, but we've had these people come in the years past, a lot of you weren't here when that happened. This is just borrowing authority that the state allocates, and, you know, if we have projects where we want to utilize that borrowing authority, we can borrow the money, and it's a loan like any other, it's bonding. And in years where we're not, where we don't plan to have to borrow, this agency asks us to cede our borrowing authority to them. That doesn't mean we're giving them money, that doesn't mean we're obligated on the loan they take using our bonding authority, it just means if we don't take affirmative action, when we don't borrow money, the state will reallocate it to another community or another municipal entity. So this is just choosing one agency over other municipalities or other agencies.
Any other discussion?
So the one quick thing, and we have a few wish lists for Galena Road in addition to what we did tonight, as far as the project that's going on, and I talked to Trustee DeBoer about this as well, that I believe that some of the funds here can be utilized to put the pedestrian walkways and overpasses down on Galena that we were thinking about including with the development down there. So I, I think this will be a useful tool. I know we're not prepared to do that today, and so kicking this to this Tri-County River Development Authority for safekeeping, I think is a good way that we can come back to the table and hopefully get those developments in the future.
And that's a good point, because you didn't say it, but I think you were headed down the path that in, in, you know, future budget years, we can utilize our bonding authority, but we can also ask this agency to utilize some of the other communities' bonding authority that had ceded it. We've always been in a position where we're ceding our bonding authority, but we can also tap into additional bonding authority through that agency, so it's, you know, it's a useful tool. In other words, we have $700,000 this year, well, you know, with their help, we could borrow $3 million, because other communities have ceded the authorities, so that's a good point.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
It passes. Next item is Resolution 2024-02, resolution of the Village of Peoria Heights approving amendment to grant agreement with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. Trustee Reichert?
This is basically just, it's inventorying the existing lead service lines, and it's just granting them an extension, an extension...
It's taken longer than we originally planned. You know, we have the grant, and we're just extending the deadline.
Okay, so extending it from, the expiration date currently is April 15, 2024, to November 1, 2024. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
And that passes. So we're, now that brings us up to miscellaneous business. Is there any miscellaneous business? Okay, then general comments from the audience. Anybody got comments? Keep it under five minutes. Thank you.
I just want to, the meeting tomorrow night, I don't know whether the village has been invited to it. It's for the residents along Galena Road, but because it's going to be impacting your community, I think it'd be important for you to be there, and that to hear what the, you know, I was shocked when I found out they were going to go 25-foot instead of 10-foot. So, you know, you're talking about getting additional businesses down on Galena Road, but what about the business you're going to be losing when they, when they, you know, because there's a hotel down there that they were going to take their parking area, but it wouldn't really affect the building, but now it'll probably affect the building and that, and several houses, so, thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing that up, and I actually wanted to let people know that that meeting is tomorrow from 4:00 to 6:30. It's a public hearing slash open house at the school. And anyone's welcome.
Now, going, going, going on the comments, looking for a motion?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Good job, Jeff.